Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo with Dave Rosacher as Vice Chair, and I'm Greg Rosenbaum Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw Planning Director, Eric England Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter Current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Epperson is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You're welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or are perceived by the planning board to be non-controversial, therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will then be removed. This case will then be heard in order, in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you'll have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The department will then transmit all that information to board as well as to the rest of the public. A copy, a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. We do have a change to the consent agenda. Agenda items number sixteen and twenty-six are added to the consent agenda as a layover item. So I'm gonna go ahead and read the consent cases. Again, I'll just remind you, if you're here for one of those cases and you want to give testimony, you'll have to stand up and remove it. And if you don't, then at the end of the meeting, at the end of the consent cases, I'm sorry, at the end of the consent reading, we'll take a vote on those, and then those consent cases will be done for the day, so. Just wanted to make that clear as I stumbled through that explanation. All right. I'll get started. Agenda item number seven, case C-12-23-192. Applicant REI Funding Group LLC. It is on for layover. Request preliminary plat approval of Hanson's Country Club Hills replat four, a subdivision inside city limits. This was laid over from our August meeting. Location northeast of Seventy-second Street and Silver Valley Road. Now, this is on for layover. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number eight, case C-12-23-200. Applicant Bluestone Development LLC. It is on for layover. Request preliminary and final plat approval of NOOK, a minor plat inside city limits. This was laid over from our August meeting. Location north and south of Eighth and Pine Street. Anyone wish to have this removed?
Ma'am, do you have a question? Are you sure what, did you hear what case? So, agenda item number eight, the preliminary and final plat approval of NOOK, that is on consent for layover unless somebody wants it pulled off. It won't be discussed unless somebody pulls it off consent, or it's just laid over.
It'll be discussed when it's brought back.
Maybe next month, maybe longer. I'm not sure on those details, but yes, if it stays on consent, it would be laid over today and not discussed. So we're gonna keep it on consent? We haven't heard otherwise.
Unless somebody wants it pulled off, we're keeping it on consent as a layover. Okay? You got that? All right. So, seeing none, we're keeping it on consent for layover, correct?
Sure.
Okay.
We were gonna talk about it today, but we're not gonna talk about it today, guys?
No. If it stays on consent, we will not discuss it today. If you are here and you want to discuss it today instead of when it comes back, then you'd have to stand up and say you want it off consent.
Well, we can talk about it later.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll leave it on consent. Agenda item number nine, case C-10-23-48. C-12-23-49. Applicant Hagan Hills LLC. It is on for approval. Request final plat approval of Hagan Hills, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R4. A portion of the property is located within the Flood Fringe Overlay District. This was laid over from our July meeting. Location northeast of One Hundred and Sixty-eighth Street and Military Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number ten, which was related to the NOOK. Agenda item number ten, case C-10-10-167. C-10-79-130. C-9-87-39. Applicant Bluestone Development LLC. It is on for layover. Request approval of the expansion of the NCE Tenth Street Neighborhood Conservation Enhancement Overlay District, along with approval of the repeal of the PK parking overlay from a portion of the site, and approval of the CUP Large Project Conditional Use Permit to allow multiple family residential development in excess of one acre in the NCE. This was laid over from our August meeting. Location north and south of Eighth and Pine Street. This is also on for layover. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number eleven, case C-3-23-226. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for layover. Request approval of the Thirtieth and Fowler-Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan. Location northwest of Thirty-first Street and Fowler Ave. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number fourteen, case C-10-21-314. C-12-21-315. C-10-10-106. Applicant Millwork Parcel Five Apartments LLC. It is on for approval. Request revised preliminary and final plat approval of Millwork Commons replat two, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from CBD and HI to CBD and HI, with approval of the Neighborhood Conservation Enhancement Overlay District, along with repeal of the ACI-1 Overlay District from a portion of the property. Location north of Thirteenth and Nicholas Street. Anyone wish to have this removed?
Yes, please.
Yes? Okay. Agenda item number fourteen has been removed. Okay, we added agenda item number sixteen, which is case C-10-23-217. C-12-23-218. Applicant KUSP Real Estate LLC. It is on for layover. Request preliminary plat approval of Bedford Heights, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from R4-35 to R6. Portions of the property are located within the Flood Fringe and Flood Way Overlay Districts. Location Seventy-Sixty Bedford Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number nineteen, case C-10-23-211. Applicant Habitat for Humanity of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R5 and R6 to R5. Location northwest and southwest of Vernon Avenue and Forest Lawn Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty, case C-10-23-212. Applicant Ben Swan. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R7 to TOD2MX. Location Thirty-three Oh One Harney Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-one, case C-10-23-213. C-10-10-25. Applicant Rachel Jacobson. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from CC to TOD1MX with repeal of the ACI Overlay District. Location southwest of Seventy-second and Dodge Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-two, case C-10-23-220. Applicant Mitch Holen. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GC to CC. Property is located within an ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location northwest of Thirty-first Street and Fowler Ave. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-three, case C-10-23-223. Applicant Matt Doherty. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from DS to CBD. Property is located within an ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location southwest of Twenty-fifth Avenue and Jones Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-four, case C-10-23-230. Applicant Arturo Lucio. Hope I said that right. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from HI to R4. Location Twenty-six Thirty-three Y Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-five, case C-10-23-210. Applicant Craig Holcomb. It is on for approval. Request approval of the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location Forty-eight Oh Eight and Forty-eight Twenty-six Q Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-six, case C-11-23-219. Applicant KUSP Real Estate LLC. It is on for layover. Request approval of a Planned Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. Location Seventy-Sixty Bedford Ave. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-seven, case C-8-23-209. Applicant Robinson and Son Vehicles LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow auto sales in the GC District. Location Nineteen Forty-one South Forty-second Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-eight, case C-8-13-225. Applicant Skyline Acres LLC. This is on for layover. Request approval of a major amendment to the presumed special use permit pursuant to Section Fifty-five Eight-eight-three-Q to allow outdoor sports and recreation in an AG Agricultural District. Location Twenty-four Ten South Two Hundred and Seventeenth Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Moving on, agenda item number twenty-nine, case C-8-23-224. Applicant, if you're here, would you please give me some help on your name? Not here? Okay. I'm Marietta Rivera De Ongrano. Hope I said that right. Request, it's on for layover. Request approval of a special use permit to allow a daycare general in the R4-35 District. Location Thirty-one Twelve South Forty-fourth Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number thirty, case C-8-23-225. Applicant Joey Stills. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow a daycare general in the R3 District. Location One Seventeen Twenty-three Camden Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion for the agenda items that are on consent for approval?
Motion approved. Case numbers nine, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-seven, and thirty.
Have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote. Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent items that were on for layover?
Motion to layover, agenda items number seven, eight, ten, eleven, sixteen, twenty-six, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Okay, so for those consent items that were left on consent, no further action will be taken today. You are welcome to stay, or you are free to go, but no further action will be taken on those consent items that were left on consent. The first, the first six items are administrative only, which means there will be no opportunity for public testimony. Agenda item number one is with Lakeside Farms LLC. I have to recuse myself on the advice of the Planning Department and the City Law Department for, just in case there could be a conflict of interest with any financial benefit to me. So I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself and turn the meeting over to Dave Rosacher.
Let the record show the Chairman Rosenbaum has left the chamber. All right. Case number C-12-23-144. Applicant Lakeside Farms LLC. Request final plat approval of Lakeside Farms, a cluster subdivision outside city limits, with approval of waivers to Sections Fifty-three Nine-Nine Sidewalks, Fifty-three Nine-Ten Streetscape Standards to waive installation of streetlights, and Fifty-three Eight, stopping site distance. This case was laid over from the August meeting. Location is northwest of Seventy-second Street and Bennington Road. And we hear from the city.
Yeah, so this preliminary plat was approved by City Council back on June twenty-seventh. As previously mentioned, laid over by the planning board here in July and August for the final plat. The final plat consists of the entirety of the preliminary plat. The applicant has submitted a full wetlands analysis, which was the largest concern of the previous layover last month. That full wetlands analysis does, is acceptable to the city and does not require any mitigation. There are a few items that need to be coordinated with city staff and finalized before proceeding to City Council. There are three Chapter Fifty-three waivers associated with this final plat, and those are acceptable as conditionally stated. Staff recommends approval of the waiver to Section Fifty-three Nine-Nine Sidewalk, subject to coordinating with the city on final trail designs and associated language in the final subdivision agreement. Approval of the waiver to Fifty-three Eight, stopping site distance, subject to coordinating with Public Works on installation of a streetlight at the impacted location. Approval of the waiver to Section Fifty-three Nine-Ten Streetscape Standards to waive installation of streetlights, except for the streetlight required as part of the stopping site distance waiver. And then approval of the final plat, subject to addressing the three conditions in the report prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
Thank you, Eric. Do we have a motion?
I will move approval of the waiver to Section Fifty-three Nine-Nine Sidewalk, subject to coordinating with the city on the final trail, designs and associated language in the final subdivision agreement. Approval of the waiver to Fifty-three Eight, stopping site distance, subject to coordinating with Public Works on the installation of a streetlight at the impacted location. Approval of the waiver to Fifty-three Nine-Ten Streetscape Standards to waive installation of streetlights, except for the streetlight required as part of the stopping site distance waiver. And approval of the final plat, subject to addressing the three conditions outlined in the recommendation report prior to forwarding the request onto City Council for final action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you take a vote, please?
Rosacher?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Approved, seven to, six to zero.
Let the record show the Chairman Rosenbaum has returned to the chamber.
Okay, we'll get started moving on to agenda item number two. Case C-10-23-77. C-12-23-78. Applicant Raymond D. Anderson III. Request final plat approval of Sonatan's Lots One and Two, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4. Location northwest of Skyline Drive and Old Center Road. Eric?
Yeah, the preliminary plat was recommended for approval back in April by the planning board and approved by City Council on June sixth. This is the first phase. The larger preliminary plat includes nine lots and one outlot. This first phase includes two large acreage, single-family lots. Staff recommends approval, subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Any further comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number three, case C-10-18-240. C-12-18-241. Applicant Celebrity Homes Omaha. Request final plat approval of Woodbrook West Lots Thirty-three through One-Ninety-two and Outlots B through D, formerly Sagewood Ridge, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4. Location northwest of One Hundred and Eighty-second and Fort Streets. Eric?
Yeah, so this original preliminary plat was a while ago, back into late 2018, early 2019. The first phase, final plat, was approved for thirty-two lots early in the year in 2019. So several years have passed before the second phase, but by and large, the layout is generally similar and compliant, although there are some additional residential lots, twelve new lots in fact, incorporated into the second phase, which includes one hundred and sixty single-family lots and three outlots within forty-five acres of land. So there have been some, a few additional comments because of the time that has lapsed, so there are some conditions that will need to be met before proceeding to City Council. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R4. Approval of the final plat of lots Thirty-three to One-Ninety-two, Outlots B to D, subject to the six conditions in the report prior to City Council.
Any further comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion for the approval of rezoning from AG to R4. Approval of the final plat of lots Thirty-three through One-Ninety-two, Outlots B through D, subject to the six conditions before forwarding this to the City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number four, case C-10-23-157. C-12-23-158. Applicant Richland Homes LLC. Request final plat approval of Westberry Creek Three, a subdivision outside city limits, along with approval of a rezoning from AG to R4. Location Forty-six Twenty-five South Two Hundred and Sixteenth Street. Eric?
Yeah, so this preliminary plat was approved on June seventh by Planning Board and July twenty-fifth by the City Council. There are thirty-three single-family lots and one outlot, which is consistent with the preliminary plat. There will need to be the need with the development team to coordinate with city staff regarding the final tree mitigation plan and relocating some of those outside of stormwater basins. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R4. Approval of the final plat, subject to the two conditions prior to City Council.
Additional comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the rezoning from AG to R4 and approval of the final plat, subject to the two conditions outlined in the recommendation report forwarding, prior to forwarding the request onto City Council for final action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number five, case C-12-23-138. Applicant Dan Dozel. Request final plat approval of Civic Corner, a subdivision inside city limits. Property is located within an ACI-1 Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location Eighteen Oh Four Capital Lab. Eric?
Yeah, so this is the site of the old Civic Auditorium, so a very exciting project. This final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat, which was before City Council on July twenty-fifth. A little bit over nine acres. There'll still need to be some coordination on final items before City Council. Staff recommends approval of the final plat, subject to conditions of preliminary plat approval, approval and submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to Council.
Additional comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the final plat, subject to conditions of preliminary plat approval and submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number six, case C-10-23-52. C-12-23-53. Applicant Indian Creek North LLC. Request final plat approval of Indian Creek Preserve, Lots One through Sixteen and Outlot A, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R3. Location southeast of Two Hundred and Fourth and F Street, and Fort Street, I'm sorry. Eric, you're up.
Yeah, so this is the first phase of Indian Creek Preserve, so it includes sixteen single-family lots and one outlot within twenty-one acres. The larger preliminary plat boundary area, which was approved by City Council May twenty-third, includes thirty-four lots and forty-six acres. There's been a revision to the tree analysis and mitigation, so staff will need to coordinate with the applicant on placement of those trees within an outlot along Fort Street within the first phase, and then which will be planted in the second phase. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R3. Approval of the final plat for lots One through Sixteen and Outlot A, subject to the five conditions in the report prior to City Council.
Any additional comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
I move for the approval of the rezoning from AG to R3. Approval of the final plat for lots One through Sixteen and Outlot A, subject to meeting the following five conditions prior to forwarding to City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number twelve, case C-3-23-227. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the Curtis Corners Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan. Location south of Curtis Avenue and Forty-ninth Avenue. And Don, are you presenting?
I am, yes. Afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. Excuse me. This project, Curtis Corner Tiff Project, is located in north Omaha, near Curtis and Forty-ninth Street, north of Sorensen there. Is comprised of nine presently vacant, single-family lots. The project will construct nine new, single-family, for-sale units, one on each parcel. They'll be about seventeen hundred square feet. Each will be a three-bedroom, two-bath unit with a one-stall garage. They are intended to sell for about two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. They'll be sold to income-qualified households. Those are households with incomes of, pardon me, average median income of sixty to one hundred twenty percent of the Omaha average. The cost of building these is greater than the sales price, thus the need for TIF. And they also have the assistance of Spark Gap Financing. That's actually a loan, but the total loan is, they don't have to repay the entire loan, so it's kind of a grant as well. The developer is the Mench Group LLC, managed by Philip McLean. Total project investment, two point seven million dollars. The TIF support for the project is five hundred fifty-one thousand seventeen dollars. Project meets the required criteria of our TIF program, been approved by the TIF committee, it's appropriate land use for the area, and we ask for your approval.
Thanks, Don.
Don, just, I've got a, one moment of rendering, well, elevation. Typical homes. All right, thank you. Don?
Yes?
I've got a question for you. When you said that they, Spark Capital is going to cover fifty thousand, and you said that's a loan, but they don't have to pay back?
That is correct.
All of the loan?
Correct.
What criteria determines how much of the loan they pay back?
I'm going to defer to the applicants to go into further details on that, but part of it's forgivable.
All right, thank you, Don. Any other proponents? Please give your name and address.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Bob Griffith, one-one-four-four-zero, Westerner Road. Here on behalf of the applicant, Phil McLean. Phil's here as well as Jake Starnes of Subback Homes. The Subback Homes is the builder. Really excited about this project. I think it addresses a new, kind of, an area of Omaha that's maybe underserved, particularly in regards to single-family homes. It's a true low-income housing project. In terms of Spark Financing, Phil has qualified for up to five hundred thousand dollars worth of their financing. Half of that, so two hundred fifty thousand, is a loan that's repayable, and then half is a grant that is not needed to be repaid. So if that, hopefully that addresses your question. They expect the cost to be about two hundred and seventy-five thousand each home.
So the developer's paying back that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And to qualify for that grant, they have to meet a long list of criteria, and it was a months-long process to qualify for that funding. Don did a great job presenting, as always. We're happy to answer any other questions that you have at this time.
Is that a federal grant?
No, this is a local.
Local grant?
Local project. I'd want to note that Phil, he's a graduate of Spark Development Academy. This is one of his first projects in Omaha, and I think we're really excited to get it going.
How is that remaining two hundred fifty thousand dollars? That's not considered a grant. Is that Phil's property supported?
Phil?
I think, I can, I don't know the background of Spark well enough to know where the money comes from. So, yeah, well, I, right. So Spark is, serves primarily as like a financial intermediary. They do back-end fundraising to support really important projects like what Phil's doing here. And so I would imagine that they've accessed a pool of grants, of funds, partially grant-funded, I don't know where, from where, that supports a gap financing like this. And so a portion of that probably to create some sustainability or to recirculate back into a program that can be offered to other applicants down the line. It's like a mix of funding, that that's part of what Spark does. So I would imagine that that's what's happening here. Phil, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
We never doubted you. Any other questions for Bob? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, I would just add, you know, this is a great project, an area that, you know, could use investment in single-family homes for sale, so we're encouraged to have new, young developers being able to take on and fill that need. So we're excited, and staff recommends approval.
Kate, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
We're going to take cases thirteen and fifteen together. Agenda item number thirteen, case C-three dash twenty-three dash two twenty-nine. Applicant Backcountry Holdings One LLC requests approval of amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from low-density residential to industrial. Location east of one hundred and eighth and McKinley Street. And agenda item number fifteen, case C-ten dash twenty-three dash two fifteen, C-twelve dash twenty-three dash two sixteen. Applicant Backcountry Holdings One LLC requests preliminary plat approval of Rainwood Park, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to GI. Location east of one hundred and eighth and McKinley Streets. Jeff, you're up.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Jeff Lake, four-fifty Regency Parkway. Along with me is Kyle Hossi from E&amp;A Consulting Group, and Justin Riviera and Jim Heine from the development group involved with this project. A couple of things. First off, the amendment to the future land use master plan, you ask why? A lot of that is the need for industrial ground that's available for development in the Omaha metropolitan area. Much of what is available is somewhat outdated and antiquated. The current vacancy rates right now is two and a half percent, which is unhealthy in most environments, and it is a sector of real estate that is still active despite some of the economic challenges we've dealt with over the last couple of years. There's simply more demand for that product than there is availability. A lot of the product that's come online in the Omaha metro area has been in the Highway Fifty corridor down in Sarpy County. There hasn't been a lot of ground available in the Omaha area. I think this area does produce an opportunity for that. A couple of things on the land use map. The gray areas are obviously what's industrial. This is Blair High Road, Interstate six-eighty. Our site, it's a little hard to read right there, is this box right in this area. Other development in the area, the Google campus, which I'm sure you're aware of, consumes that much of the industrial area. And then this piece right here is under contract with a public utility company, so that will also be, as I understand, a kind of an industrial-type use. Looking at an aerial of that to kind of show development, here's State Street, here's Rainwood, so zoomed in a little bit on it. Again, our site is this piece right here. So we are contiguous with industrial development to the west and to the south, and soon to be southeast, as well as the whole character of Blair High Road, in our opinion, is industrial, and it serves that need for additional space in the Omaha metro. A little bit on the preliminary plat, which is the case fifteen on that. I'll go to a site plan for that piece. So here is our plan. Along one hundred and eighth street, which is our west boundary, we have three approximately two-acre parcels. The intended use for that is industrial, more of the flex category, so two-acre parcels, twenty thousand or so square-foot buildings, three different opportunities for that. It's trades folks, it's people that have a little commercial presence along with the need for a little bit of back-of-house function. That's our targeted use for that. The three parcels behind that are approximately fourteen acres, and the targeted use for that is large warehousing, similar to what we've seen up and down the Highway Fifty corridor in Sarpy County. We do expect these uses to be on the lighter side of things. Some of that rationale, the city had presented us, a downstream sewer capacity issue, which is one of the kinks we worked through on this project for some time, and results in us having a limit of how much sewer we can discharge from the site, equaling what residential would be if that was what this was to be developed as. So another reason we don't expect those heavy uses, that are large demands and consumers of water and/or sewer, so the warehousing and the flex seems to fit well within that. Our early calculations show that we're well within those limits of that capacity. How the site's configured, there's a lot of grade on the site from east to west, so these are going to stair-step down from east down to west. There's also approximately a seventy-foot rise along one hundred and eighth street from the south of the site to the north of the site, which kind of drove the reasons for our access points where they are. We simply couldn't get an access point on the far south of the site, which is the lowest part, and try to climb up into a project in excess of a hundred feet. So that's one of the reasons we're configured that way. A little bit on our process, as this is an amendment to the future land use plan and rezoning, there are existing property owners around it. We did reach out early to the neighbors. We sent out letters to approximately seventeen affected property owners that were around here. I think it was August eleventh when we sent those letters out. We submitted August seventh, and we had a Zoom meeting that we offered for all of those folks on August twenty-second. We did have four participants in that Zoom meeting. We had a lot of good conversations and answered a lot of questions, and we did have one other individual follow-up afterwards that was unable to make that. So we spoke with five of the neighbors, and then another member of our team met with the Frost family independently of that, who owned the farm just to the north of that. With that, you know, we're hopeful we can answer any questions or concerns from both the board, as well as the neighbors, and ask for your approval for this amendment and preliminary plat approval.
How do you feel the meetings with the neighbors were?
I thought they were good. There was, I think it was forty-five or fifty minutes. You know, the questions about, a lot of the tone of those was noise and light, those sort of deals. So of course, the lighting codes provide that, you know, downcast lighting and zero cutoff of property lines. Access, traffic, some of those typical questions. And then probably the biggest one, you know, from the Frost family, what we met with them again, was drainage of, they have a fair amount of drainage, it's a hundred and fifty acres or so that drained to our site. It was a low point, and they're concerned of, you know, impacts to their ability to continue to farm. So we feel there'll be a solution there, an engineering solution. We have a couple where we'll have extra-large pipes to take that through the site. We're working through those kinks, and we'll continue to work through those through the process.
So that drainage with the Frost family you're talking about, that's, you're continuing to work on that, but you're planning on taking that water through your site?
Yes.
Is that what you just said?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And without getting into weeds too deep, the original plan right now is to have parallel storm sewer systems. We're taking that through, and its first calculations, it's like a seven-foot diameter pipe. So it's a good-sized piece of pipe, and of course, how much can we impact there, how much do we flood it, how long? Those are all engineering issues. We'll continue to work through with them, and I know they're here today and plan on speaking a little bit on that topic as well.
Okay. And we're just at the preliminary plat stage?
Correct.
Okay.
Be hopefully three more cracks at it, right?
Yep.
So. That'll answer any other questions and turn it over to any other proponents if.
Jeff? Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
You bet.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? You can come up, Kurt.
Yeah.
I own the ground to the north.
Kurt, we need your address, please.
One-one-two-two-zero Rainwood Road.
Thank you.
I don't mind the project going in, it's just, I'd like to know what the stormwater, getting the stormwater off of my place. I don't want any water backing up on my farm fields.
Okay.
So.
Well, okay, we'll bring Jeff up in a minute, but, okay. Is that your only point?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Kurt.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Good afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name's Andrew Wilkinson. I'm an attorney in town, here on behalf of Jane and Bob Slezak at ninety-five-twenty North One Hundred and Second Street. Just to orient you to where they are located. They are directly to the east of the proposed plot there. It may be a bit of a misnomer to say that we're completely opposed to the proposal. We'd just like to see some sort of mitigation efforts related to that plot, as it's a directly, a direct adjacent plot to our, my client's land. The proposal itself indicates that there's, that the eastern edge of the parcel is the Lake Cunningham watershed, and, you know, I don't know if that's necessarily true or not, but it appears to me that it's, there's a direct property line that's adjacent to the property itself. And so when we had discussions internally about how best to approach things, we wanted to come in good faith and with, you know, a reasonable list of potential mitigation requests. And so we've, our main concerns are related to the, basically the visual, the site, site pollution, sound pollution, things like that. There's also a safety concern, but I think that's somewhat secondary or down the list of our concerns related to the site and the visual. So we've put together a list of potential mitigation solutions for consideration, and these are sort of our suggestions. As it relates to that property line, we think there's sort of an adequate remedy there. If we have some sort of foliage or a tree line that's planted that protects the privacy and sort of maintains the character of the existing land there, that are these homes and the property that are in, to the east there. There is a tract of approximately eleven or so homes that are directly to the east, some to the north as well. And while there is that industrial character to the west and to the south, the north and the east, I think there's a way to sort of ease that transition in there as well. And so that's, these are the, sort of the solutions that we are proposing, and maybe a conditional acceptance for the proposal, to have some sort of mitigation efforts attached to those things as well. And so again, the tree line, perhaps a fence line, again, that would sort of transition to the residential portion of things, and ultimately, some sort of restriction on the height of these warehouses, noise restrictions, quiet hours, things of that nature. So these are, we're trying to present solutions as well as just kind of raise our concerns. So that's what we have.
You think Andrew?
Yes.
Have you communicated or articulated this to the developer or provided this information to the developer?
I have not personally. I believe my clients were out of the country during the Zoom meeting that he referenced, so I don't know that they, that other owners might have expressed the same things. I don't know, but I have not personally done that.
Any other questions for Andrew? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public, you're an opponent?
Yes.
You can come on up, if you want to speak.
My name is Mark Stevens, and I live at one-zero-one-nine-one Garvin Road, which is at the end of the property, it's a dead-end road, just south of where Bob, you know, lives, Slezak lived. And again, I'm with the lawyer state and just supporting the idea of my concern for light and noise pollution, and that there's some mitigating effort to suppress that. I moved out there for, to be away from the light pollution and sound pollution, and we've enjoyed that for a number of years, and my concern is if, particularly if this, with the light industrial and what may take place, would there be twenty-four-hour truck traffic coming out of those buildings, whatever's developed there, and adding to the noise pollution in the area? So the list that was presented, I'd like to see implemented with the most extreme effort. So that's all I had to say on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Any other opponents? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Jeff, did you want to come back up and then? I don't know about how to go forward with the mitigations that Andrew presented because you just saw the list, but are you committed to working with the neighbors and working on that list?
Yeah, Jeff Lake, 450 Regency Parkway. Absolutely. Yeah, Mr. Slezak's, he had his real estate agent at that, on that call, was one of the participants and shared a little bit about the noise and the light, but we didn't get any specifics. Certainly offered at that point to continue those conversations and to work with them through the process. You know, I think that list, I think most of that stuff we can accommodate. I think there's some ordinances that control a few of those with the light and the noise too, that before I comment specifically on that, I need to study it a little bit more too. But certainly we'll follow those ordinances and if we can exceed that in a reasonable way, we'd commit to that too. You know, our site does sit significantly below, I mentioned the grades. We're going to be pushed down quite a bit below what it is now, just to make that work. So there'd be a hell of up to their property, which will help some with appeasing the concerns of having a building looming over their site. That's certainly not our goal. And we'll continue to present those options with them through the process, certainly. Both he and Mr. Stevens, seems like they had similar concerns. But I had not seen that list nor heard from Mr. Stevens yet, but we absolutely will continue to work with them through the process.
Mark, or Jeff, do you know anything about the 24-hour truck traffic? Is that too early to speculate on at this point?
Yeah, I think that's too early to speculate, yes. And I think that depends a little on the uses and those users. I think there's things we can do to try to mitigate and implement that. I think one of it's just, it's probably worse during construction somewhat with backup, you know, alarms, those trucks don't have that. But, you know, there's idling of trucks and things of that nature that, again, I'm not an expert in that, and we can continue to look at options to assist with that. We are conscious they are fairly large acreages sitting above the site.
And you can talk with them after the meeting, right? You'll have open dialogue.
Hundred percent hope to, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
And Jeff, I'm going to, with, for the Frost family, just request that you keep an open dialogue with them, keep the channels open and plans so that they know what's going on.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, they've been very accommodating and, as I said, partner of the team Jim Hine met with them and talked through some of those issues. And we'll continue to transition that to an engineering solution that meets all those requirements.
Any other questions, comments for Jeff? Okay, thank you, sir. Eric?
Yeah, I guess I would just kind of reiterate a few of those items that were presented from opposition or seeking mitigation efforts. Some of that is in Chapter 55 zoning requirements. Specifically, there's sections of measurement of noise and maximum permitted sound. That's based on zoning district, both of, you know, where the site is located as well as the adjacent properties.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
That's right. You know, so there are certain decibel levels that are, it varies based on the zoning districts. So, you know, most of the properties are either DR or AG zoning around it. So along with that, there's also buffer yard requirements. So there will be a 60-foot landscape buffer yard requirements of the industrial zone property if it's approved. So there will be a number of tree plantings and planting requirements that would be required with any building permit that comes in for the industrial ground if it's adjacent to either DR or AG zoning or anything that's not industrial zone. So you have the noise and the sound, you have the buffer yard, other landscaping treatments. You know, some of the light pollution, there's a little bit in the zoning code, but not much. That's a different chapter in our Omaha municipal code, so I can't specifically speak to those. But there are regulations in place that, as mentioned, you know, requires the downcast lighting and things like that, so they're not spilling over into adjacent properties. I don't think I have much else. Obviously, we are not having a street connection to the residential areas to the east. We felt that would be inappropriate and want to make sure that we prevent any industrial traffic. So while we do stress connectivity, we obviously need to look at these uses that can, you know, exist and be compatible adjacent to each other. And industrial is acceptable to be adjacent to residential, and that's the reasoning for the buffer yard provisions in place with the zoning code. So I just wanted to make mention of that. Obviously, there is some challenging grades, as mentioned by Jeff previously. So we'll continue to work with them and as Jeff mentioned, but just to reiterate, and I'll read this, you know, verbatim, because this is an important component for us to be able to support the master plan amendment. And that's adding language to the subdivision agreement stating the maximum sanitary sewer flows that may be generated by each of the lots at a rate equivalent to single-family residential development. For each lot, record a memorandum of agreement highlighting this restriction. So our Public Works Department is in coordination with the development team, and there will be specific identified numbers and flows and gallons, you know, whatever those figures are, I can't speak to that. But they are definitely on that, and it's our understanding this does even require less sewer flows than what a typical residential neighborhood would require based on the uses that are being proposed. So I don't think I have anything else. We do have two different cases. Number 13 is the amendment to the future land use map, so I will just say that staff recommends approval of that, but if we have questions, we can keep dialogue going.
Any further comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Regarding Agenda Item 15, which is the plat and rezoning, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to GI and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 19 conditions in the report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve rezoning from AG to GI and approval of preliminary plat subject to the 19 conditions in step.
We have a motion in a second. Before I ask for the vote, I just want to remind those landowners that are down here, this is just a preliminary plat time. There's going to be additional meetings for this. So there's time to work with Jeff and the development team and to make sure the engineers and everybody works out your problems. All right, do we have a, do we have a, yeah, we had a motion. Kathy, please record the vote.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Okay. Agenda item number 14, case C10-21-314, C12-21-315, C10-10-106, applicant Millwork Parcels, Parcelment LLC. It was on for approval, it was taken off. Request revised preliminary and final plat approval of Millwork Commons Replat 2, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from CBD and HI to CBD and HI with approval of the Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement Overlay District, along with repeal of the ACI-1 Overlay District from a portion of the property. Location, north of 13th and Nicholas Street is the applicant here.
Good afternoon. Is that better? Katie Underwood with Olson, 2111 South 67th Street. I'm the civil engineer on the project here representing the applicant. The development team is here as well as the architect, in case there are any questions that I can't answer. But really, just a real quick overview, this is the third, it's listed as Phase 3. It's the next phase of plating that we're doing specific for this project. We're dedicating public streets around the project. And then we've also cleaned up a little bit of the interior lot lines as well. This project has been a little bit of a puzzle piece of plats. There was a lot of unplatted land and some platted. So over the last several years, it's gotten a little messy plating-wise. So we're cleaning that up with this plat as well. But really, the crux of this project is to dedicate the public streets around what's listed as Phase 3 here in order to prepare for the next building project, which will be apartments with retail on the main floor.
Do you have users identified for most of the development in all phases at this point?
Not quite yet. No. Phase 4 is still a little bit up in the air. We've, we've had some, we've had some interest over the years for projects there, but as of now, that's not final. Phase 3 is really the one that we're moving forward with currently.
Oh, you're, so you're starting with Phase 3?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, Phase 1 and 2 are underway, and there's still a little bit of cleanup that will be done around the, on the east side of the Mastercraft Building. We'll be extending this street, 12th Street, at some time in the future. And there could be a building project that goes there as well. But again, that's all future. So this current project is just, the current project on the horizon is for Phase 3 specifically.
And your client, your developer, they own all of the properties within the dotted lines that exist?
They do not. Some of that is future-forward. It was listed as Phase 1 because we dedicated right-of-way for 12th Street, and so they were pulled into that initial plat.
Okay.
We're not doing anything, we're not touching anything on what's listed as Phase 1.
Okay, so you're only, your development team's only the properties that are shaded in gray?
Uh, yes.
Right?
Correct. Yeah, that probably caused a little bit of confusion with the, because we're cleaning up some of those interior property lines, we kind of pulled in what we had done previously as well.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Thank you, Katie.
You're welcome.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Somebody pulled this off, did they leave or? Oh, okay. No opponents, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions? Eric?
Yeah, I don't have much to add. Katie did a good explanation. Yeah, it is, it has been a little confusing, it's been a little messy from a plating perspective, but that's fine. We continue to work through it with the different phases, and there's a lot of different property owners and a lot of development taking place in that the area is quickly transforming, it's becoming very nice if you haven't been up in that area. So we're excited about the next phases, and staff recommends approval of the NCE Overlay District on a portion of the site, approval of the repeal of the ACI-1, ACI Overlay District from a portion of the site. Those will be identified in the rezoning ordinances. Approval of the rezoning from CBD and HI to CBD and HI, and then approval of the revised preliminary plat subject to the eight conditions in the recommendation report. Oh, and the final, one more. Approval of the final plat subject to conditions of revised preliminary plat approval and submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the NCE Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement Overlay District on a portion of the site. Approval of the repeal of the ACI-1 Area of Civic Importance Overlay District from a portion of the site. Approval of the rezoning from CBD to HI to CBD and HI. Approval of the revised preliminary plat subject to meet the following eight conditions. And approval of the final plat subject to conditions of revised preliminary plat approval and submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number 17, case C10-22-310, C12-22-311, applicant First Management Inc., request revised preliminary plat approval of Pacific Court, formerly Pacific Rose, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from R1 to R4, along with a waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks. Location, 9402 Pacific Street. Oh, there's, may we hear from the applicant, please?
Dan Dolezal, Arhart Griffin Associates, 3552 Farnham Street. Well, they say three, third time's charm, so this is the third time I've been here on this piece of property. The, just to give you a brief history, the first, I think it was 24 units went in, it was going to be a condominium with a financial situation three years ago. They couldn't get financing, so they went to a 22-lot standard subdivision. The cost on that didn't work out, and we're down to eight houses. They have a builder, they're convinced that this will work. That's the last I've heard. They're working through their numbers now. We finalized our plans, we've submitted them, so I'm here to answer questions, really.
Who are you referring to in the same thing?
First Management, Eric Wiesler.
Okay. Any additional questions for Dan? Nope, thank you, Dan.
Mr. Peyton, Jay Encanto is the builder.
Who's the builder, I'm sorry?
Jay Encanto. So those two are working together on this.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions?
I have one question.
Okay.
The only, I don't even know if it's in opposition, but we just, we got comments back from the church next door asking about the commitment to put an ornamental fence along the property line.
Yes, we showed that on the plans that we've completed here recently. But that's planning on being constructed as we build the streets and the sewers.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't hear Dan's comments, I had to step out. But obviously, we've seen a lot of different versions and iterations of plans on this site, so we're hopeful this is the final one. Let's get this thing built. But the request does include a waiver of the sidewalk. That's not, to not provide sidewalks, it's more a modification of the sidewalk to provide for the six-foot curb walk along the private cul-de-sac street, which is acceptable. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R1 to R4, approval of the waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks to allow a curb walk, approval of the revised preliminary plat subject to the six conditions in the report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning from R1 to R4, approval of the waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks to allow a curb walk, approval of the revised preliminary plat of Pacific Court, formerly Pacific Rose, subject to the following six conditions.
We have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Agenda item number 18, case C10-23-221, C12-23-222, applicant Jasper Stone Partners, request preliminary plat approval of Bennington Cottages, a cluster subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R5 and R6, along with a waiver to Section 538 site-stopping distance and 5399 sidewalks. Location, southwest of 168th and Abigail Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Bradley Hike, 10836 Old Mill Road. I'm with TD2 Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. I'll let him step in as well.
DJ Henman, 16820 Francis Street, Suite 206. Maybe I'll just give you a quick 20-second overview of the project. So this used to be, this used to be an old tree farm for several decades. And about 15 to 20 years ago, that tree farm, they actually traveled further north to get more land. So there's lots of commercially planted trees on the site, which is what we fell in love with it for. We've done, we've gone through, we've marked every single tree. We know exactly what every single tree is. We want to keep as many trees as we can. We want, and since we're keeping the trees, we want to keep all the grade as well. So it's going to be a fairly complex project. That's kind of what our development team likes to sign up for, I guess. But we think this will be a special project, and we ask for your approval.
So a question for you.
Yep.
I should know this, but what is a cottage development as opposed to a single-family development?
It's a single-family detached, what these structures are going to be is they're going to be smaller in scale. So they will be anywhere from 700 square feet up to just over 1,000. And our goal and objective is to create them as efficiently as possible. We'll be using our internal teams to design them. These are, is going to be a very nice, high-end development, but yeah, it'll be very small in scale.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you. You bet.
Thank you, DJ. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'm up here.
Jared Kretura, 107 Abigail Street. And I don't know about an opponent, I guess. I moved in in February there and bought the property primarily because of the trees and everything else and the privacy it backs right up to. So really, my big concern is what's going to happen with that as far as lights.
Seeing none, I'm up here.
Jared Kuretura, 107 Abigail Street. And I don't know about an opponent, I guess, I moved in in February there and bought the property primarily because of the trees and everything else, and the privacy it backs right up to. So, really, my big concern is what's going to happen with that as far as lights, like there, I can't tell for sure for the scale from the plans I was provided, but it does look like there's going to be a road running right along my backyard out there, and so that's kind of, I want to make sure to preserve as much of that as possible, I don't know, there's both, like you stated, there is mature trees and bushes on both sides of the property line, that, yeah, I would most certainly want to see preserved and not to deal with the noise and the lights and everything right outside my backyard.
Okay. Any other opponents? Okay, seeing none, I'm now going to close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions? Eric?
Yeah, so, a few different elements to this request, so we have the preliminary plat, and then, which is also a cluster subdivision, so that brings some unique codes from Chapter 55 and Chapter 53 into play. And then, there's some different zoning designations, and then two waiver requests, so let me just touch on a few of those items. So, the site, 18 and a half acres, 54 lots, two multifamily lots, seven outlots. You have part of the street network, which is public right-of-way, which is the east-west Main Street coming off 168th, and then you have the north-south street connecting to the neighborhood to the north. You also have an internal private street, which is built to some slightly modified city standards allowed with the cluster subdivision regulations. You know, the cluster subdivision allows for more innovative site design, and, you know, incorporating other open space, so the layout and the criteria definitely fits within what's allowed for a cluster subdivision. You know, there's a request for a sidewalk waiver, that's not on the main public right-of-way streets, it's more for the internal private street, but in lieu of that, there is a trail network that's provided throughout the site, usually going more in the rear of the homes and connecting to the back of the properties. So, that waiver is acceptable, and then you, Public Works is still wanting to coordinate with the development team on the stopping site distance waiver, so we are not recommending anything on that waiver, so that will have to be a continued item that gets followed A few other items that we'll need, pretty standard with preliminary plat conditions, just some further wetlands, full wetlands analysis, there are a couple of items that need the zoning board of appeals, setback waivers as it relates to the cluster subdivision, but as we discussed in the pre-meeting, it's kind of the unique criteria that the cluster subdivision sets out, whereas those are definitely supportable, but it's kind of a unique situation with that code clause. So, there are proposed to preserve the outbuildings and to use those more for the community, I just want to reiterate, those cannot be used for commercial purposes, but used by the residents of this development for those nature, so we'll have to coordinate on the final language. And just touching on, there's four acres of the multifamily, so those are the two lots, more on the eastern side, adjacent to 168th Street. As we mentioned in the pre-meeting, the master plan does allow multifamily zoning within low-density residential areas in grouping smaller than 100 units when it's away from mixed-use centers, and there are several criteria, but this does fit that bill, so the master plan is supportive. That four acres allows, you know, up to about 90 multifamily units, in addition to the cottage-style homes. So, if you have any specific questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, staff recommends approval of the waiver of Section 5399 sidewalks for the proposed private street, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 32 conditions in the report.
Do we have a motion?
Approval of the waiver of Section 5399 sidewalks for proposed private streets, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 32 conditions outlined in the staff report.
Before I ask for the vote, I missed Dave, he had a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just to talk to DJ, and I guess, just, you already have dialogue with neighborhoods, very compatible usage for the neighborhood, but it's always beneficial to continue that dialogue all the way through and resolve any concerns, because concerns grow out of hand, you know, from what they really are, and communication is key to all of that. I think that this will be a nice neighborhood addition, a nice little community, so just keep that dialogue going. Thank you.
We already had a motion in a second. Kathy, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.